Thank you. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Today is Wednesday, August 17, 2016. It is 4:30 exactly, and we shall begin our council meeting. May I please have a roll call?
Pete Hamel.
Here.
Randy Funkert.
Here.
Brad Hent.
Here.
Greg Gils.
Here.
Zach Sawyer.
Here.
We have an echo. That's why we're all looking around. It's okay. Thank you, everyone. I think we just have to turn that volume down on the computer and we'll be good. We're good? Okay.
We're fair.
Thank you, Ted.
We're gonna move on. First on our agenda is public comments. If there are any public comments, now is the time to step up to the podium. You may share your name and share your public comments with us. So at this time, I ask whether there are any public comments.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
My name is Harold Otto Postma, and I don't live in this community, but my family has been around here on my side and my wife's side for close to 100 years, if not more. In any case, the reason that I'm here is that last year, somebody apparently instigated a complaint against us because my wife was on the corner of the park in connection with Saturday morning doing a small farmer's market. And the best that I've been able to trace down is that I was told by Mr. Weenya that he received an email from the mayor, and now when I have asked him to produce that a second time, initially, he told me that he was gonna charge me 25 cents for this email in order to forward it to me, and now he claims to not be able to find it. In any case, I went to the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting and was told that they had adopted a policy. And immediately thereafter, this policy, which bars all vendors from city parks, was violated by having a grilling on every Friday in July at the downtown park. Not only did they use the park, but they also blocked off part of the street and the parking. And I guess I was kinda curious about that because after reading the policy, it now appears that no vendors are gonna be allowed in the city park for city celebration days. And unless the city council stops this kind of activity of people poking around and creating problems directed at other people and then creating policies that are not adopted by the city council, and apparently for what the city council is totally unaware of of what's really going on, the policy right now stands that no vendors will be allowed in the city park for celebration days. It's not been approved by the Parks and Recreation Committee, and there's nothing other than a policy that completely bars that. And I would like to ask the mayor, who it was that instigated this, and approached the mayor in order to create this whole situation and create this policy that was adopted. As I understand it, they wanted to have an ordinance, the Parks and Recreation Committee, which would've come for a full discussion and made everybody on the city council aware of what's really going on, and instead, there was this policy adopted, which has no formal authority really except to, you know, create this policy, and I'm not really sure what the legality or standing of that is, but I'd like to know who it is that started this whole thing off by approaching the mayor. Can you answer that question for us?
As far as approaching the mayor, on what? The policy or you selling in the park?
Both.
I saw you selling in the park. A year, two years ago? To be honest, I saw someone selling in the park.
Yeah.
And I did question, how can somebody just set up in the park and sell? I wanted to know if that was legal or not, or if that was doable or not.
And nobody else approached you about that?
I can't remember. I had a problem with it. That's why I called, wondering, who is this selling stuff? As far as the rest of the stuff, as far as the policies with the Parks and Rec, I'd have to check with that, because I don't know for sure.
Well, it's on the website, and it's in the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting minutes where I appeared there a little over a month ago, and the policy is clearly quoted and stated in their minutes.
Okay. I'll have to check into it. I do have a question, though. Why don't you just go to Farmer's Market and sell there, instead of at the city park? Are you part of Farmer's Market now?
I'm not a part of Farmer's Market. My wife is.
Oh, okay.
And I was helping her.
Sure.
And the focus was apparently on me because I received a, after the police department approached my wife, they waited until I was gone in order to do that. Why, I got a phone call from Dave Deister saying that he had talked to the health department, and it turns out that he didn't call them until about an hour and a half later, so he had not talked to the health department. And he said that we were barred from being in the park. And I'd already read the ordinance and had a copy of the ordinance, which indicates that the ordinances of the City of Sheldon do not bar any activity. So why are you even questioning about why we're in the park? Because there is nothing in the ordinance that bars us from being in the park at any time.
I just have to check. I don't know when I saw it. When I saw it personally, I don't know, but anybody else, I can't remember that. I just thought, who is this person selling, setting up vendor in our park?
Well, why don't you stop by and find out, then?
I was driving by.
Why don't you read the 383 pages of city ordinances?
Okay, Mr. Postma, we'll take everything you said into consideration. This was a year ago, year and a half, two years ago, right? Or is there still a problem today?
Well, since then, we had gone across to the Hy-Vee store and gotten permission from them.
Awesome.
And over there, on private property. Yes.
I'll have to check into that.
Yes. Well, I have the message from Mr. Jorgensen on my phone yet. I also have the message from Mr. Dave Deister on my phone yet. And if you'd like to... The second point is this. The Farmer's Market is being held at the depot, and I questioned already two years ago about why the interior of that is not being fixed up. And Allison said, well, why don't we put you in charge of that? And I was... And Mr. Gils was there, and the rep from Vogel was there, and we discussed a plan to do something about that. But there are some other people who apparently think that they are in charge of that building, and they were very... Building. And I then asked Mr. Weenya exactly who was in charge of that so that we could get something done with that, and he said that he didn't know, and he would get back to me, but I've never heard anything back from him about that. And in the meantime, agreed to replace the roof and spend a whole pile of money on that building. But if you look on the west side of that building, there's something that is very dangerous. The brick has collapsed on the outside of that building, and it may damage the foundation. And if the foundation is damaged, there's really no point in spending any other money on that building. And I haven't done anything more to try to figure, to further, how to get something done with the interior of that building, but it is possible to do something with it, because of the condition of the interior of that building and the parking outside of there. And I would just draw that to your attention, that I don't think that it's feasible to start spending money, to continue spending money on the building when the foundation may collapse because the ice and the snow and everything else builds up on the west side there and can't get away from there and tends to go down to the foundation and so on like that. And I haven't gone into the basement to check on what's going on there, but it is a danger to the public.
Okay.
And the public tends to use the south entrance, but there are people and vendors who go in and out of that west end. I think the council should evaluate the whole situation about what really should be done there before spending any money, whether it's free money or grant money or anything else like that.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will go down there, it's been a while, but I'll go look at that. Thank you very much, Harold.
Do have a question with that.
Yes.
Park Board has adopted a policy that no vendors can be selling in the city park. How does that work for celebration days? Have they given them to do that?
I think we have to check with Allison, but I think that's how they go through that application process.
Permission, sir. Have they asked if they can, if they have a policy, has FCDC asked to put vendors in the park?
Sure. We'll have to check.
So, is that answered?
There's something to look into there.
Okay.
Yep.
Because we do give permission for them to be at Friday noon at the city park.
Yes, for Farmer's Market.
Okay.
But we'll look into that as far as the celebration days of the park. And Harold, just so you know, one, who it was, it was what they were doing at the park, and if they can do it. So it's nothing personal. I did not know it was you and your family. So, moving on. Number two is our consent agenda, and we do have one item that Brad would like to point out, the consideration for approval of a special outdoor liquor license for Shatsees.
I mean, and asked if he could have that extended to 1:00 instead of midnight because he has a ban there from 9:00 to 1:00. They won't start any earlier than 9:00, and he paid them for four hours, so he wanted to know if we could go until...
Okay. Did he say anything about notifying the neighbors like we've asked him to do in the past?
I did tell him that he'd have to do that, and he said he would. And I said, we'll go up to the rest of the council, and I thought he was going to come and talk to the rest of the council the way he left it with me this morning.
Right. I did hear from a family member, but not specifically about what it was to be.
And then the question I have with that is, his liquor license only has the date of the Saturday. Well, if he goes after midnight...
The outdoor liquor license?
Is that outdoor liquor license done?
That comes at, no.
Instead of midnight?
Okay. I don't know how that worked.
Yep.
Okay.
And I think last time, that's what we asked Shatsees to do, is notify the neighbors. And I don't recall if we got calls on that last time they had an outdoor event. Lyle, do you remember that? I know the very first one we got phone calls.
First couple we did.
But as long as he's notifying the neighbors and it's done at 1:00, not 1:01?
Yep, that's what I told him. I said, done at 1:00. I said, or don't come back.
Don't ask again. Okay. Thank you. Any questions regarding Shatsees and Bar and Grill? Any comments? Consent agenda?
Well, just as far as Shatsees is concerned, notifying neighbors, so he notifies them and we're gonna be having, going to 1:00. What recourse do they have if they don't? I mean, they just have to live with it? Then? If he notifies them, that's all that, I mean, so he notifies them.
We're gonna have a ban, giving them a heads up.
What if they're not in agreement with it or don't want that?
I'm not sure.
But it's not any different than if he goes to midnight, then he goes over. What recourse do they have? I told him, I said, we'd talk about it. I said, if you go over, I said, I wouldn't come back and ask for another outdoor permit.
We didn't get anything last time. Can you... Don't recall.
Was it rained out?
I don't know, was it? I think a couple days, like a rain.
The last two events or whatever, the stipulations were to contact, notify the neighbors. Police department was aware of it, and it went until midnight. So his only additional request is what he's requesting instead of midnight is to go to 1:00 AM.
Right, it's another hour.
What's the stipulation of contacting the neighbors? Maybe more just out of courtesy, not asking for approval.
Right.
Saying, hey, this is the night we're having an event. Like, you know it's going till midnight. I don't think it was a permission request other than notification.
Well, I mean, yeah, but so they know it's gonna be a noisy night till 1:00 in the morning.
Sometimes it happens when you live in that, in a neighborhood where there's a bar. Or an outdoor festivity. I don't wanna just say a bar. An outdoor festivity can happen too.
So, right now, the... In the past, it's been till midnight, or the...
The last two, I think, the council approved it to midnight, that he had to shut it down at midnight and notify the neighbors, council members, is to request to go later, which sounds like he's requesting to go to 1:00 AM instead of midnight.
Right. Is that the Saturday night of Labor Day weekend?
Yes.
Thank you. I think give the neighbors a heads up. And if, like we said, if we get the complaints, then future, we'll have to reconsider that.
Right.
That's my thought.
Try it.
Any other questions or comments regarding that or the consent agenda?
So moved to approve?
Support.
Thank you. Last request for a comment, question, concern. Roll call, please.
Gils.
Hi.
Funkert.
Hi.
Hent.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
Sawyer.
Hi.
Okay. Yes, the library board is going to make a presentation, and that will be Jessica. Thank you.
I'm Jessica Brink, and I'm representing the library tonight, and I am on the Board of Trustees, currently serving as the president. And we also have several of our other board members here supporting our presentation to you today. We are, as you're probably aware, we're preparing for a new director and bringing them onboard to the library. We would like to secure and broaden the role of the assistant. While the assistant director works under the direction of the director, he or she is also responsible for making the day-to-day operations of the library and making sure that everything works well in the absence of the director. Our assistant director is also the person who makes the library shine. The director looks really good with a great assistant. Time to introduce leadership improvement at the library. The board has a much broader and larger vision for our community's library. The Sheldon Public Library is more than just books and a bank of computers. In the words of Robert Putnam, "People may go to the library looking mainly for information, but they find each other there. Community gathers to explore, interact, and imagine." We want our staffing to be able to expand upon, grow, and improve the role of our library in Sheldon. After careful consideration and deliberation, the Library Board of Trustees is asking that you make the same City of Sheldon benefits available to the assistant director. These are things that are offered to our director. In turn, the Board of Trustees will add vacation, sick leave, and other benefits to the assistant director role. As you can see on the table on page one of the handout I provided to you, most libraries in our community of similar size have more than one full-time employee, many of which have city-provided benefits. The funding of a full-time assistant director will allow our library to provide greater continuity in its services, including programs, materials, boards, greater vision for the library. Keeping the role of the library in mind and the fact that the library is approaching a pivotal time in its leadership, the Board of Trustees wants to foster an environment of professionalism in our staffing. By having a full-time assistant director, we feel that we will be able to bring in better and more qualified candidates for a new director at our library. We greatly appreciate your consideration and look forward to the opportunity to partner with the City of Sheldon to make the library our best possible for our community. Do you have any questions?
I'm sure we will. Let us absorb a moment, Jessica.
I know, I'm so sorry. I didn't know the rules. If I was supposed to give it to you ahead of time or not?
No, you're good there. We have rules, but it's okay. And when are you looking for this to happen?
As soon as possible.
Okay. And when is the change for the current director? Is that November-ish?
We are looking to get that in writing in this next board meeting. And we are looking for, Ruth is, and we are going to start seeking a new director. Our staffing committee is starting working on that very soon. We do have some resumes coming in already.
We're going... That position is currently hourly paid, correct?
Correct. So we would change, we would also, as a library board, would be a wage position, or excuse me, a salary position versus wage. But that would be part of our library's budget.
We open this up for discussion?
I don't foresee action being happening right now, but I would like, if there's any questions right now off the top of your mind, let's ask them.
I guess...
Go ahead.
I struggle a little bit with this. This is something that I think should come at budget time, just like the ambulance did when they came and asked for their full-time employee. I don't know budget, let alone the city's budget. I said, so I struggle with this. I think this needs to be, to vision this thing out to happen in the future. I mean, come and throw it at us now with three days' notice, I struggle with that. I think this planning employees and help, you need to think future. You know, and we budget money accordingly for, I mean, this is potentially a $41,000 increase in the budget somewhere. By the time you figure that fits, you add that all up, that's about $41,000. Does that, does the library have that in their budget to go right now and say, go ahead and do it?
Well, they currently cover the salary, and I think Jessica's saying they would cover the salary portion of it. What they're requesting in addition from the city would be just the benefit portion. Depending on the type of coverage and the information we put out, family coverage, yeah, you're talking probably an additional $24,000. But I agree with your sentiment, Brad, you know, it's not levy for that portion in this current budget year. Typically, the practice would be in November, December, as part of the budget request, that you'd request it for the following year, then to start July 1 of 2017. So then Ange could incorporate that in the budget and see once all the numbers panned out from that perspective.
And at the same time, we have to start somewhere, so this is our first step.
Exactly, and I didn't expect a raving yes right now, you know?
And I don't think that there's anything, let's be honest. It would be nice to have that, the sooner the better, right?
It would be.
Right, it would be. But, but because we are just in the beginning of our budget year, it's something I think that we need to pose questions and have, it's gotta be a conversation that goes back and forth for a little while to see where we're gonna see it, and then when budget time comes, then work that in and see how things are gonna handle out then. I don't think it's a no right of way as far as this happening.
I would like to see...
It's just, we're not gonna be able to say yes right now today.
I'd like to see a vision of what the board's plans are for these, how they're gonna structure that.
In the material you provided, I see the table down at the bottom, a lot about the cities, and a lot of them do have assistant directors. But am I reading the table correctly and seeing that most of those do not receive full benefits?
Actually, the, all but Sibley does.
Okay.
City of Sibley, Sibley Library employees are the only ones that have employee-paid insurance. It's still through the city, but the employees are responsible for it.
I was just reading it as it was the directors only and only.
No, it's for the whole row.
Okay. So, on Sibley, both the director, the youth librarian, and the circulation clerk, they all get employee-paid insurance?
Well, right, the sure, at least they even have the option to get insurance through the city, which we don't even have for our assistant director now. We can't even say, if you want insurance, you can at least buy it. It's not even an option for us.
Is that an option?
Not right now. I don't believe so.
No, I mean, could it be? I mean, don't we have...
See why not if they're willing to pay for it.
Right.
Aren't we obligated?
We...
I think they're deemed as a city, and so they wanna cover that portion. Could they do that, Ange?
I actually am not sure, because according to Meritain, she probably wouldn't qualify based on the amount of hours that she works.
But if she would go full-time to full-time hours, would they potentially qualify that?
And are full-time hours considered 30 or 32?
32 for our insurance.
Okay.
And the current assistant director is at least at 32 to 35, I believe.
But not to put her on the spot, I don't think she's gonna be excited to pay towards it.
Right.
That may be, but if at least it's an option for people who truly need it, they at least have a choice.
Right.
Right. So it is an option to put her on there, it's just a matter of...
And it doesn't necessarily, Brenda is currently the assistant director, but that doesn't mean, you know, we're looking in the future too, where if, there may be change in leadership there also, where we wanna make sure we're ready for whoever it is we bring onboard to the library.
I guess in this process, I'd like to see further comparison as far as not just the director and the assistant director, the total library budget. If we're in the ballpark or not, I have no idea. That's probably something we should, an exercise we should probably look at.
No, the library board has actually presented that in past budgets. They probably have the information quicker than what we even knew. And Ruth or whoever put that together in the past did that a year, two years ago.
We didn't compare against other city library budgets.
Yeah, they did. I don't remember what that was.
I think it was before me. So, two months ago.
Maybe it was before you were on the board, even Jessica's...
Yeah, that could be before you, to them, before you took...
Yeah, I've only been on the board for four years.
Got it.
On your comparison, there's three communities that just say city benefits. What do those cities entail?
I don't have the details of that. They just are provided city employee benefits. So if we wanted to get into more details, we would need to gather those.
Okay.
This is something...
I think it's just a really good starting point, as you all have already addressed, and the fact that if we just came to you in November, December with our thing and said all of a sudden, oh, yeah, we wanna make all these type people full-time, and we'll be like, um, thanks for the warning, and no.
Right.
So, starting the conversation and having you starting to think about that, I think, is really where the board is in allowing us to have growth at the library.
Good.
They do get Ipers.
They already get the Ipers.
All the adult permanent part-time are Ipers qualified.
Okay, great.
Permanent, part-time, full-time.
Adults, permanent, part-time.
Okay.
Okay.
So they do get Ipers, okay. And I think, yeah, now with, there should be a change with the director, so, yes, now is the time to start the conversation. Thank you.
Okay.
I think what we'll need to do is just, and then as budget tone comes up too, you know, as things are starting to progress, we'll have you back and talk some more.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. What else did I want to say? Just to make note, library really shipshape. Thank you for all that you do, who's on the board. It's really got a good thing going on over there, and we thank you for all that you do and thoroughness. It's very nice to read that in the minutes, so, thank you, Jessica.
Yeah.
And welcome.
Everyone. Thanks. At the library board, not to leave anybody out.
Thank you. So the conversation has begun, and we'll take it from there inside. Okay. Number four on our agenda, only number four, and it's already 5:00. The wastewater upgrade presentation. Ryan with DGR is going to provide us with that presentation. Hi, Ryan. Nice to meet you. I'm Tricia. Here it comes, everybody.
Thanks.
No, never to see that.
Just to introduce myself, my name is Ryan Norman. I'm a project manager with DGR Engineering, which is a consulting engineering firm located in Rock Rapids, and I'm here to talk about the wastewater project. To begin with, you guys were issued a new discharge permit for your wastewater of 2015, and ever since then, I've been working with your city staff to kinda discuss what improvements, if any, were gonna be a result of that. So to begin with, the new discharge permit had new limits... with, the new discharge permit had new limits in it. Among those, there was more stringent ammonia, there was new E. coli limits, and then there was also phosphorus and total nitrogen. As part of that permit, they give you a compliance schedule, which is basically about four and a half years to do pre-limining and then construction and optimization, whatever improvements are necessary to be in compliance. And I, included in your packet, I believe on page five, there is a printout from that new permit, which has the compliance schedule on it. And in there, I highlighted two dates. The bottom one is the important one, which is the end compliance date, which is March 1 of 2020. And then the closer one, the facility plan, which is part of the planning stage, and basically you submit it to the DNR and tell them what you're gonna do to meet your new discharge limits. So for the past several months, I've been working with city staff to kinda go over your existing facility review, you know, determine what you can and can't do and potential improvements needed for it. As part of that review, we determined that you're unable to meet the E. coli limits, and you're unable to meet the phosphorus or total nitrogen, consistently meet the new ammonia limits. So there are times of the year when you can, and certain times of the year where you cannot. In addition to that, we determined that your plant is also hydraulically undersized, meaning in the past, you've had bypass events where you've had to bypass treatment and discharge directly to the river, which has a notice of violation from the DNR. So, as we started going through the planning, we kinda started as a very broad base, looked at a bunch of treatment technologies, and we tried to narrow it, potential improvements that we decided to narrow it down to. One of them was an expansion of your existing facility. Your existing facility is RBCs, which stands for rotating biological contactors. And as part of that, we were looking at not only adding to that, but replacing the existing RBCs, because they were kinda old, outdated, had a lot of maintenance associated with them. While the RBCs work to meet most of, it would be unable to meet E. coli, phosphorus, and total nitrogen, so we'd have to look at adding additional new treatment steps to that. Another process that we looked at was called the MBBR, which is a moving bed biofilm reactor. And that's similar to your existing facility, similar treatment, meeting most of your limit, ammonia, and total nitrogen, but unable to meet phosphorus. The final option we looked at is called the SBR, and that stands for sequencing batch reactor. And that's kind of a newer technology to the city. And so at the beginning, there was kinda some discussion on whether that was the right step or not. But as you can see, when we go through the cost estimates, it's by far the less expensive, it can meet ammonia, nitrogen, and phosphorus limits. And I guess to add here, all the alternatives would have to add disinfection to meet E. coli. So I guess if you wanna turn to page three, here we kinda have a breakdown of the proposed costs for all three options. The SBR option, while expensive, is quite a bit less expensive than the other two options. So I guess now is probably as good of any time to open the floor for comments.
The SBR option, is that newer of these technologies?
Not necessarily newer. It's been around probably since the 80s.
Okay.
But.
Is that, are there any advantages as far as future upgradability to any of these three? In other words, when we get to 2020 and they have a whole new set of regulations?
So, as, as part of your permit, you kind of, if you agree to these two permit cycles, so you shouldn't be assessed any now.
Ten years, Pete, right?
Yeah.
It cycles five years.
All right.
So it'd be good for 10 years, okay.
But the, the SBR though is that, the SBR system, well, less upgrade? We have to go through this whole thing again?
In 10 years.
Right. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So there is always the potential to have to upgrade. We are trying to allow to make the up, if you have to ever do an upgrade, most likely in the future. I mean, if, if limits keep getting more and more stringent, you tend to look more at doing basically a water plant. So either through filtration, or if it ever gets to the point to have to go more towards membrane treatment. I mean, there's nothing, if you have to get to those type of limits, there's nothing that's gonna get you there, except a treatment process like that.
But the SBR is fairly adaptable when it comes capacity-wise, because it's a, if you look at the diagram he's got in here, it's a four-cell unit. You can fairly easily add a fifth cell. Try and correct me if I'm wrong, there is potential of chemical addition
Right.
if we have to as well. Currently, we're planning on doing all the treatment biologically without the use of chemicals.
So yeah, on, on that drawing that I provided, you can see the, the four cells, the four process trains of the SBR. The ability to add, expand for capacity to the north, there is also the possibility for some potential more stringent limits to add chemicals into this train.
Being that it's built at the supposedly the old dump, is the ground, does this building have basement, or is that ground suitable for building something like this out there?
So if you look on that drawing, you see all those Xs with numbers by them. We did some preliminary borings out there with a geotechnical firm. And so yes, it did identify that there was an old dump there. We didn't find any organic or any toxic material. It looked like it was more debris-based, construction debris. So yeah, these, these structures will have a floor or a bottom of the concrete below the top of grade anyway to get down there. So what we're planning on right now is that that bottom of the excavation will be down to, I guess, below the, the trash, I guess, down to undisturbed soil. So then it's just a matter of having to dispose of that debris during construction at the landfill.
And we'll have to do a more in-depth analysis, Brad.
Okay.
But we're, before we say.
As the next part of this, if we keep moving with this alternative, we'll wanna actually get a geotechnical firm out there to actually do a, you know, excavation and foundation report to tell us what, how feasible it is.
The other thing, Brad, we are landlocked there.
Yeah.
But we got the armory. Then if you go to the west, we have the, well, we're on floodplain.
Yeah.
So there, you can end up with issues there. We don't own any more ground to the south. So if for some reason this wasn't work, then we would have to go into Plan B. But for today's planning purpose, this makes the most sense.
Yeah, I see that, yep.
And I'm, I'm gathering that this, just looking at things, this replaces what we have. It's not an addition to what we have, or will what we have still be used?
For the most part, it replaces all of your treatment. There is still the sludge processing, your sludge press, and your storage that will still be used. But yeah, a bulk of it is, is new. Yes.
You indicated in your report, you had toured other facilities close by, I mean, anything, I mean, who else is new in it?
Uh, we, so there are, I believe there are nine or 10 SBR facilities permitted in Iowa for municipal waste. We toured two. One was in Atlantic, and the other was in Clearlake.
And Todd and Dean went along as well on those tours.
So those were, they were also two different manufacturers. We wanted to get a look and talk to operators from a couple of different manufacturers to see what they thought the pros and cons of their systems were. That helped us make a determination of what direction we wanted to head.
And you interviewed three different, you sat down and met with three different manufacturers through the process as well?
They come in and did presentations to us, and, and then give us reference lists. And we had conference call, somebody from Kansas City, Nebraska, somewhere in Nebraska.
Yeah, so we did also have some follow-up conference calls. I know one was.
Or that were.
Yeah, it escapes me right now.
But we had phone conversation with other places.
But in those conversations, it's not just the price tag that's driving this, it's the process as well, in terms of its.
It's considerable. I, I'll be honest with you, Greg, we did not, Ryan didn't want to, nor did Dean and I wanna see it. Dean and I did not look at a single price tag until we were, almost had our, our process selected. Because we didn't wanna, we wanted to select a process based on efficiency and usability more than we did price tag. We had an idea that SBR might be cheaper, I mean, Ryan had cared to that, but we had never seen the number that you're seeing on the chart.
Good.
No. We didn't, we didn't want it to be, nor did DGR.
And also, operational-wise was a big part of it as well. I mean, the operations of this are certainly more efficient than the other systems, it appears.
I mean, it really makes sense that, I mean, in terms of how it works and the fact, I mean, that, that's why it was chosen initially, the price.
Nice.
It's the only fair way to evaluate them. That's what we felt, then.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments for Ryan while he's up? As you know, this, again, the beginning of a long conversation, how did you say it in your notes to us, how the puzzle will be pieced together? Yeah, there's gonna be a lot of discussions taking place. But do we have any questions right now anymore for Ryan?
Big difference with a project like this, you know, we'll talk next about the water-tower project and a few items there, is the DNR is dictating a timeframe of completion. They somewhat have.
Our hands tied.
Have your hands tied to some type of process, something has to be done. It's a necessary evil that the state and the DNR has control over of moving forward. The council and probably not a whole lot of changes and whatnot that you're gonna have as far as is moving to the, the public comment period and approving the, to publish the anti-degradation report. That's the next step to kinda keep the process moving forward. Correct me if I'm wrong there, Ryan and.
Yeah, and I, I could probably quickly comment on that. So as I showed you in that compliance schedule, there was that facility plan deadline.
Yep.
In, in order to submit that, you are required to analysis. And, and basically what that is, it's a rule implemented by the state of Iowa that anytime you wanna increase either flows or mass loading, if you have a discharge permit, you have to go through this process. And basically, what they want you to do is, they, they figure that you have what you wanna do, a process selected to meet it. They want you to look at an alternative that's less degrading to the river, and they want you to evaluate the cost effectiveness and all the other benefits of those. And so, yeah, the, where we wanna go next is, I guess, basically get authorization to go to a public comment on this SBR being the preferred alternative to meet your new discharge limits.
All right. Thank you. Question, I believe, is done for now. But like Scott was saying, next number five would be considering to approve to publish the anti-degradation, I don't know how to say that correctly, report. You got that? Anti. So do we have a motion to approve that? Or do you have questions and comments yet? I gotta be honest, this stuff's way over my head. I'm glad that, Todd, you know what you're doing?
Those two know what they're doing, I'm just along for the ride.
Exactly.
I'll make the motion to approve that publication.
Thank you.
Support.
Yeah, I'm in for a while, so now we're putting more feet to it. And thanks for the work so far you guys have put into it. May I have a roll call, please, then?
Sawyer.
Hi.
Conker.
Hi.
Kent.
Hi.
Amel.
Hi.
Gills.
Hi.
Okay, number six, considering the engineering proposal for the water tower project today, we are not going to take action.
Fortunately, today, Todd and I were contacted and got a phone call. Just kinda backpedaled a little bit, as you're aware. One of the items we wanted to pursue is, is a community development block grant. Over the course of the last several months, this is actually federal funds that go through the community development block grant. They have changed a lot of their processes and regulations, rules, et cetera, with applying for a community development block grant. And we feel it's, that not to take action on the engineering report, as we found out today, we now have to go through a procurement process for selecting an engineering firm. We, of course, are gonna obviously work with this DGR and see how the process goes, but we have to basically put out a RFP, a request for proposal, to various engineering firms. And it's not just bound by the price tag, but based the entire proposal. So we're gonna work with Northwest, Steve Hallgren and Northwest Iowa Planning Development, is putting some potential to entail an environmental and archaeological study. So they're, they're certainly getting way more stringent and stringent on what their requirements are for possible funding. We did have a brief conversation of whether this is worthy to go through this, because there's always a cost by the time you do an additional study, go through the procurement process, et cetera. But Sheldon decides the community is, is eligible potentially up to $600,000 in the form of a grant. No guarantee, something worthy of making sure we get our ducks in a row, get the application right before we apply for the funding. So at this time, I'm recommending no action on the, the engineering proposal.
Thank you. Glad that call came in, just in the nick of time. So, thank you for that. So we'll move on, number seven. We have our first pay request on the Crossroads Pavilion. You'll see that is in the amount of $338,901.10. I have not, it's taken shape, so take a drive and we're done here today. Any questions on the progress? If not, do we have a motion to approve the first pay request?
So moved. Support.
Thank you. Questions? May I have a roll call, please?
Conker.
Hi.
Gills.
Hi.
Ange.
Hi.
Amel.
Hi.
Sawyer.
Hi.
Number eight on our agenda is the consider, considering the request from the Northwest Iowa Regional Trust Fund, where did my notes just go on this? Scott, would you mind?
Yeah, I can sure.
I have my notes, I just gotta find them.
We've been a part of this organization for a number of years, six, seven years probably now that we've been part of the Northwest Iowa Regional Trust Fund. It's basically a housing rehab program. It is income-based, based on income. I'm not exactly sure the amount of funding they're gonna have available this year for $350,000, $400,000 range. For a number of years, we actually use the. to be used for a rehab project. We had $190 left in the fund, we used the remainder of those funds. Before they do it on a population per share, our cost share to continue to be a member of this is $2,404. So it's a, it's a county-wide program. I think every city for a number of years has been a part of it. The county also supports it. They cover the, the county portion of it from a cost standpoint, if we want to continue. Not exactly sure on the numbers, but I think there's seven homes that have been rehabbed in Sheldon through this program. Knowing if, if one more house would be rehabbed and qualified, I think the $2,400 would more than cover that. I think most of the grants are probably in the, the $10,000 to $12,000 range. Air conditioner, roofing, windows, those type items are the ones that qualify for the program, so.
We'll get it back plus more.
If, if we get a eligible candidate for the program. Yep.
Great.
And our funding is based on percentage for a population?
Correct. So that's how they break it down, as you see, we're 36% of the, the city portion population. So that's how they come up with the cost share that, that is owed.
I think maybe they should consider population when they donate for the library.
I was thinking that earlier.
Randy, echo that one, amen.
Amen.
That's been...
No, it's just...
Totally.
Just saying.
Just saying.
Keep, keep it, yeah, I mean, this isn't necessarily the county that came up with this, this is maybe, but it's a good point that is on record. This is through Northwest Iowa Planning Development, they actually facilitate the, the housing rehab program through that.
That's come out.
So noted, you are correct.
All right. It is a good program.
You looking for a motion, are you?
Yes, please.
I would so move.
Support.
Okay. Any questions? We'll take this out of lost, I would assume. Yeah? Yes. Okay. Sure. May I have a roll call, please? Funker?
Hi.
Hints?
Hi.
Gills?
Hi.
Sawyer?
Hi.
Amel?
Hi.
Sawyer?
Hi.
Number eight on our agenda is considered, and that will be Todd Yule, and that takes effect immediately, or when you're...
For the September board meeting.
Meeting, okay.
August 25th is the last meeting, I think Todd's planning to come with me, so it'd be effective starting in September 22.
So you'll be our new contact for that. And I can tell you're excited.
We expect to get that here by next year, so.
Yeah.
No pressure.
See what you can do.
No pressure.
I'm going to look really bad if he does.
Work on Grassley.
Face speeding tickets.
Thanks, Randy.
Sorry, Scott.
Thinking of Lewis and Clark, Scott, are you still going to remain on the board?
I won't. I'll, I'll still be involved probably in some of the legislative processes due to the contacts, like with the governor's office and the state of Iowa and, and some of the, the federal contacts with Grassley and King and Ernst and stuff, so.
I think all the time...
That's going to be a key project for...
Yeah, yep. It's, it's, it's good for the region, so.
Communities are involved in...
Yep.
You've been very active.
So, yeah.
Murray, Murray Hollstein from Sioux Center is the actual board member, but I'll, I'll do some of the, he doesn't like all the legislative stuff, so I'll go do some of that yet.
On that, on that point, though, what is, do we have a tentative date of...
I'm sorry.
When Sheldon would be hooked or not?
2012.
About pretty good.
I'm, I'm, well, that's honestly just the backtrack. That's when the plan was, when it was authorized in 2000, that we were supposed to be connected. You know, the state of Minnesota funding Lewis and Clark or, or giving a, a federal funding advance, the state of Minnesota's put in, I think, like $41, $42 million to the state of Minnesota. They're looking for an additional $11.5 million, which will then bring it to Worthington. They're trying to get a special session set up to get that approved yet this year. Then the Minnesota line will be finished. The good thing with that is, it's, it's helping the line come this way quicker, because then eventually, all the federal funding then is allocated every year, will start going to...
Like when Minnesota, Iowa was, was looking at doing that.
Yep.
And Minnesota's donating, I mean, they're not donating, but they're putting the funds ahead of it.
Yep.
The payment back to Minnesota, is that after everybody is...
After all members are connected.
Connected.
So the federal funding is not required, so if we get $9 million, doesn't get that? It's a federal funding advance, zero interest, unsecured loan, with no payback mechanism. They honestly, the state of Minnesota is funding it with the understanding that it, it could be 50 years before they get it back. But the, the language in all the agreements is, they're not paid back till all members of Lewis and Clark are connected. Then whatever states put money in, because South Dakota put like seven, eight million dollars in, then they'll, they'll be paid back on a prorated share after all. They're in the process of making requests, the state of Iowa to get in their infrastructure budget. We requested in our conference call with the governor here a couple of weeks ago, $3.3 million, that would be the funding to action from Beersford to Sioux Center, so. It's a, it's a small amount in the whole scope of it, but that's a realistic number that we thought we could probably request in, in that budget. And hopefully, it's fairly favorable that we'll get that done this next year. So.
Okay.
What's your update?
Thank you for that. And keep pushing, thank you. Okay, so a motion to approve Todd Yule to be the...
Motion on the board.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Amel?
Hi.
Sawyer?
Hi.
Funker?
Hi.
Gills?
Hi.
Hints?
Hi.
Thank you. And last is comments, any comments? Lyle?
Last Tuesday and Thursday, we did shop with the cop in Sheldon. Some of you were involved, or family members were involved. We took a total of 36 kids shopping for back-to-school, school supplies. Super impressed with, with the chamber members and local merchants this year. It was a neat event.
Very nice. Was that, are your numbers up, or is it about the same every year?
Actually, down, we're just really selective. We don't want it to become a welfare agency. We're, we're very selective and, and in fact, the police, I'm as surprised as anyone when we get that, get there that night, because we have no idea who's even being selected. That's all done by love in the name of Christ.
Sure. Awesome. Thank you. Chad, anything more? Counsel, to my love. I just have a reminder, August 19th is our deadline for applications to be submitted for the city manager position. And just to let you all know, the search committee will meet on the 23rd to do another review process. With that said, do we have a motion?
Motion adjourned.
Support.
Thank you. I was going to say, somebody's got to support this motion. Roll call, please. Amel?
Nay.
Funker?
Hi.
Sawyer?
Hi.
And Pete, you get to stay here, but the rest of us...
I'll be here. All week.
Last week.
Yeah.